Welcome to the East Bridgewater Community Meeting on Thursday, June 25th, 2019. This town has taken over the meeting.
Summer.
Second.
Mr. White, Dr. Smith, and Ms. Brown, on favor.
Aye.
Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a guest with us this evening. We have Mrs. Morton. Welcome.
Mrs. Morton.
And she's going in to discuss the...
Sure. So, these are the kinds of telephone calls and conversations that superintendents like to get. Mrs. Morton reached out, called my office, asked if she could come in and just talk to me about East Bridgewater, the community, the kids, and how we can build a conversation around diversity. And like we talked about, we don't have a large diverse population or ethnic population, however, and that's okay. But it's not okay not to recognize diversity, and it's not okay not to recognize that people have come from different backgrounds, or have different cultures, or have different ideas. And so, we had a great sit-down for about an hour, and then this evening she came back in, and we've been talking about 25 minutes. And she has some great ideas, and I think that it would be nice to continue to have her maybe come to the school committee. I've talked to Karen Clifford about having Mrs. Morton come in. She has those parent groups once a month, maybe come to that, maybe come to some other parent groups. She knows the principals. She's had her children have gone to Mitchell School, just seventh grade, the sixth grade just has come up to seventh grade. And you have a graduate?
Yes, a high school graduate.
Graduate from East Bridgewater.
I have a seventh grader and a fourth grader.
And a fourth grader. So, our principals know, but I think it would be something to start the conversation of a cultural conversation, and to be able to bring other parents, community members, kids together, students, and maybe even start some cultural groups here at the high school. I think that's probably where it would start and stem from, and then it would trickle down into the lower grades. But Mrs. Morton wanted to come this evening just to have this conversation with us about promoting diversity at East Bridgewater.
Good evening, everybody, and I want to thank Dr. Lagarde for bringing me here today. It's been an absolute pleasure to come here tonight. So like, my husband and I, we moved here to East Bridgewater. Our children weren't even age, you know, school-age children, except my older daughter, who went to high school here. When we moved here, I worked in Cambridge, so I kept driving her back and forth to Cambridge to her school day until ninth grade, when I transferred her. She used to go to the charter school, Prospect Hill Charter School in Cambridge, which is absolutely the most diverse charter school ever that you would go. So she had an absolute cultural shock when we came to East Bridgewater. We met with the high school, which was the old high school. We met there with them, if they had any ideas, what they're doing, anything in regards to diversity. At the time, they were doing exchange students, to exchange students from other places, other countries. I know at that time, they had, they'd done some exchange student from Brazil. My daughter really had her time in high school, going here, and it was all about, you know, for her, it was the lack of, like, she didn't have any interest also in adapting to the new community and the new schools. But this is where she was gonna stay. You're gonna make of it what you're gonna make of it, but this is the school that you are. And so, throughout these years, we knew that we moved to a town that there was really not much of diversity, and I, we knew the percentage of, you know, diversity that was here was gonna be hard, you know, for our kids. But we've never, you know, I've never participated in anything in the school since I've been here. This was my first time coming here, so I don't want to be part of the problem, I want to be part of the solution. And for me, it starts, we got it, you know, that's where it begins. This is my community, this is where they're growing up, this is their town. So we've done a few things. My husband, Carl Morton, has been very involved in the community. He knows most of the children. I tell him all the time, I don't even know how you know every child's first name and last name, but he knows most of the children in this town. He's coached them for basketball or soccer, very involved. So we made our, this community very part of us, so lately, my seventh grader is having a little bit of her time. She's been fine, when she wants to talk about it, we talk about it. But recently, she started to really talk more about the lack of diversity in the school systems here. One, the conversation began because she had few diverse students that were her friends that have left the East Bridgewater schools. And obviously, losing her friends and starting to understand, she's getting older, now she's in this high school, and she, her curiosity is bringing more topics and more conversations about diversity in the town. And the other day, she told my husband and I that she would like, when she begins high school, ninth grade, she would like to go to a different school. And I asked her why, she said to us, because I don't want to finish high school and wonder what it would be like to have been taught by a black teacher or a diverse teacher. So that prompted us to come to the phone call for the superintendent to talk about, is there something that we can do? How can we begin this conversation? It starts with a conversation. I'm like, I've come from a third-world country, very poor country, Cape Verde Islands, I don't know if any of you have ever heard of it, west coast of Africa. I came here when I was seventeen and a half and have raised myself, you know, to be here today, all on my own, learning English, doing, you know, going through all the barriers, but survived. And I learned about diversity in this country when I came here, because in my country, education wasn't that great, so they're not teaching us about diversity or anything beyond, you know. So coming here, going to high school here, going to college here, this is where I learned most about what diversity is. To me, diversity is education, diversity is knowledge, diversity is inclusiveness, is acceptance of others, is so many things that are the beauty of who we are as human beings. And when we accept each other, and our kids in this, in this town or any other town, that, you know, diversity is not being really voiced with loud voice, our kids lack that piece of knowledge. And it's bigger because our children, you know, the world is so much bigger, we want them to know that the world is so much bigger. There's so much difference in the world, because they need to know that to grow. So in, when my daughter said that to us, I began thinking, well, okay, we can, we can put her in another school, you know, I can say, I'm gonna, we're gonna transfer you to another charter school or a private school, and that would have been it. But I began to think about, well, why would this be just about my daughter or my son? This is not just about them. I'm a mother, I'm a mother of my community, I'm a mother of every child who lives in this community, because if I want my daughter to learn something different, if my daughter wants something different, I'm assuming other kids in this school want something different. And how do I do that? By coming here, beginning this conversation, meeting with families, and discussing this issue. Because one, for me, I want to know what everybody thinks about diversity. I want to know what, how you guys deal with it, what are the ideas that I need to learn for myself? You know, as the minority in the town, I want to know more about what the majority wants and what the majority have to give, because I got nothing to lose but gain. And when I transfer that to myself as an adult, I'm thinking about children. What else can we do to help this? What else can we do as a community, as parents, to bring more knowledge to them when it comes to diversity? How can we come in here? Can we do groups? We can do groups, we can start different initiative. I was telling Dr. Lagarde that I would like us as parents, that are so hard at work every day, to one day maybe get together. We bring food, I'll bring Cape Verdean food, and I, we have other diverse friends that I want to bring here, make something, dress up, I want to dress up like different styles that we have in Cape Verde, so you can see. You may have a friend, somebody else may have a friend from a different country that wants to come to our group, and let's have a family moment. You know, that's all part of what diversity is to me, is just about us being together, no matter who we are, what background we come from, but that we embrace each other. And embracing people is the biggest thing that I believe is part of diversity. And if we can start, I just want to start a conversation. From there, what can we do in the future? How can we all come together and figure out different ways that we can make this more part of our schools and more part of our community in East Bridgewater? We have no intention of leaving.
Good.
And, you know, I don't want my children to feel like they're the outsiders, I want my children to feel that this is their community. I want them to want to stay, I want them to want to embrace it, I don't want them to think that it's us versus something else. I want us to, I want, I feel like I am part of this, my husband, we do, but as little kids growing up, that's what I want for them, and I want the other children to feel like they want them. And so, how do we do it in a way that we are gonna benefit from it, and that the kids in this community are gonna benefit from it, and how can we feel that we belong here? So she will never have to tell me, I want to leave my community to go to a different school, because we, they love their community, they love their friends, we have nothing but great experiences, and anything that was beneath that, it was nothing but a learning experience. So for us, we feel embraced, but I don't want her to feel like she doesn't want to be here. And how can we fix that for all of our children, not just mine? Is why I'm here today.
I think it's great that you've, that you've cracked the shell and to start this conversation. I'm happy that you called me, I'm happy that you and I had that conversation, I'm happy you brought your husband in. I didn't know he knew John, or I would have made John stay away. I didn't, because the conversation quickly went to basketball, and who's playing in the game, and, no, I think that's great. I'd like to have more conversation here at the high school with Mrs. Clifford, so that she can start to spread that through the groups at the different schools. The principals are here tonight, they've heard this. Mr. Gentile and Mrs. Byrne are here from Central and Mitchell Schools. I think that this is something that we need to start to maybe open this conversation a little bit more. I like the idea of having the food. I know that Ms. Byrne would get very nervous about that, because you know...
I think it's great idea.
I know you do, but she would get very nervous of who could eat what, and what table could we sit at, and, but I think it's a great idea.
I'm prepared, my favorite food is Indian, so.
But I guess I hand it over to you all.
I think it's amazing.
I think diversity is a great idea, I would love to see more of it.
The male thing, it just blows my mind. I mean, I, I went to a Catholic school, and one of the ways we embraced diversity in terms of not being tied to our own religion was, we had a state of supper, we had a Hindu-type celebrate, we did, covered every religion throughout my time in Catholic school. And I learned, I mean, I learned a lot just from doing that. And I don't think it's just even diversity of culture, it's even diversity of interests, in respecting other interests and exposing kids to other interests. I know, for me, one of the things I'm doing in the community is starting our own East Bridgewater 4H Division, because I've been traveling the East Middle West the last five years, and a lot of parents have reached out to me and said, you know, I can't do that, would you be willing to try an East Bridgewater group? Why, I don't even think it's just the cultural thing, I think it's the whole interest thing, and we are kind of insulated.
What were you gonna say?
Location does that.
Oh, I was, a number of things. I was gonna, first of all, compliment you on how eloquently you make your point, how lucky your children are to have you and your husband as parents, how lucky we are to have you in our community, and I really hope everybody in town, if they don't watch the rest of the meeting, just watch what you had to say, listen to what you had to say, and most assuredly the point of, I don't want to be part of the problem, I want to be part of the solution. Whether it's your situation, my situation, anybody's situation, what a far better world this will be if that was the predominant mindset that we all have, instead of picking out the differences between each of us and criticizing them, you're going the complete opposite way, which I certainly applaud, and I, I think it's a wonderful idea, concept. Kudos for you for stepping forward, translating what your family situation is into something that can help the whole community. Absolutely tremendous, and I think, I think it's an absolute wonderful idea, whether we reach out to other towns and find out that they have other diversity programs that we can mimic, at least to get us started, have a cultural night in town, and people come and get to explain, talk about their backgrounds, their ethnic backgrounds, and in reality is, it's a diverse world, no matter, no matter what your perspective, it's diverse, and the children are gonna live in it, and we hope for a long, happy time, and that's gonna be a direct result of them accepting the diversity, accepting the differences in others, and, and building on that as a strength, not as a, not as a point of contention. So, thank you very much. Well said, well done, and whatever we can do, I certainly think it's a great idea.
And Ms. Noice, we've gotta talk about this at the high school and start that conversation. I think, I think last month with the bullying, they had a lot of conversation, a lot of different kids got together, young, old, you know, not young and old, I shouldn't say that, I should say, seventh and eighth grade, all the way to the seniors. They got involved in the video and being out in the hallway together, in the cafeteria together. I think that that's how we expose our students across the seventh through 12, and this could be a way to even connect, as we talked today with our teachers here, that seventh and eighth, that connection that we need to have throughout this building. This could be a way to do that too, as well as help us bridge the connection between that eighth to ninth and the transitional groups from buildings to buildings.
If I could just add one thing to, this can be really fun. I think most people know I do a lot of work with the Girls Club in Austin, and we have a kind of the opposite problem, not the opposite problem, an opposite situation, where it's such a melting pot, where so many different people come together, and it's food, and music, and dance, and games, and rituals, and exposure from one to the other, and it's a lot of fun. You know, sometimes you go, okay, now we have to do diversity. It's not, it's a part. When people get to that, they really do enjoy it.
It'd be great to see that, you know, community center, you know, used in those kind of ways.
That's perfect, perfect.
Perfect idea.
I mean, that's why we have it, you know, yes?
Ms. Morton, I just want to say, I think it's really admirable what you're doing. I think the community needs more people like you. You know, nobody, there's a lot of dangers to raising a child in a bubble, and I think the more we can expose them to, the more they can understand about other cultures, it's really, really important. And I just want to say that your contribution to East Bridgewater, your family's contribution, you should know, it's more than you realize. When we moved here the summer of 2013, two weeks before the school year began, we didn't know a single person, and your husband took my oldest son under his wing on a soccer team. Your husband was literally the first person we met in East Bridgewater, and we couldn't stop talking about, if that was who East Bridgewater is, what a lucky place we found. So, you know, you just, your family keeps giving back to this community, and we really appreciate it.
And I'm not sure if you got the right Carl, but he started a program at Bridgewater State University.
Yes.
Still putting kids through, putting them on a college track.
Foster kids that grew up in the system, helping them sustain the four years of father, which is very important for them to do.
I met him at a birthday party, and he spent two hours sitting at a picnic table.
Talking.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Thank you.
Amazing family.
Yeah, you gave him amazing things.
Thank you, yes. So I really appreciate embracing this idea. I, coming here today just tells me again that we are in a great town, and that's, the feeling is mutual, and we want this to be part of who we are, and that I want my children to feel proud, to live here, grow up here, with the people that we know. We are so grateful, we love being in this town, we've embraced it from the second we moved here. We got married in West Bridgewater. We only, we had two friends here in East Bridgewater, that's how we started coming to East Bridgewater to visit our friends, and one day, we just decided that this was gonna be our home, and we've been here for 10 years now, this June will be 10 years.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will talk.
We're gonna continue the conversation, and I think the principals, when we have our meetings, let's, let's think about this and how we could integrate a little bit more, maybe, maybe even have Mrs. Morton into faculty meetings to discuss what she discussed here tonight with our teachers.
Any volunteer that I...
That's wonderful, because we were just talking about volunteers today.
Any volunteer.
Ms. Noice, you were just saying we need volunteers. That would be great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see the extra people here, but, so we have a public comment section, does anyone want to make a public comment? Superintendent, water?
I just wanted to update you on the spring break trips, that we, we went to Paris, France, and Yosemite National Forest, and I know that while the kids were in Paris, France, the Church of Notre Dame went and had a fire. Our, our students were safe, and they were in no danger at any time, but they were the, one of the last groups to go through the church at that time. They were back at the hotel in plenty of time, they were back at the hotel, had dinner, getting ready to go to bed, and then they turned on the TV, and they started to see the church was in flames. I did talk to Mrs. Celia, I had Mrs. Celia come down, and we had a conversation, and she said they were in no danger at any time, that she did correspond with Ms. Noice while they were over in Paris. The kids were having conversations with their parents, had texted their parents, those who didn't go. We had 77 people on the trip, we had a lot of teachers, a lot of parents had gone, she felt they were safe at all times, they said it was one of the best trip, probably one of the finest trips they've ever had, and she told me, just a complete success, but they were complimented by their tour guide for the, for our students, just their behavior, their attitudes towards everything, everything was okay, you know, it's all right. And, but they were, she wanted me to let everybody know that on the way home, they were complimented by the flight attendant. There were 77, you know, usually on a plane of 170, you know, 200 people, they were complimented by the flight attendant, the flight attendant said that the kids were so well behaved, so mature, so nice to each other, that they just had a wonderful time with our kids. So, that just says kudos to our parents who are raising our students, and to our faculties, our staffs, our principals, that we continue to raise the best, and they rise above. The kids went to Yosemite, they had a wonderful time. One chaperone and three students lost their luggage, one student still has not had her luggage back, but the company that works with us said that they've never had that happen, they have, they bought everybody brand-new clothes, bought them everything that they needed for the trip while they were there, and the one student who still does not have any of her clothes, or the luggage has not been found since, she is getting a full reimbursement from the company, not the airline yet. The airline will then, the airline will probably come back, so I said, this is gonna be great. If this young lady's on the way to college next year, she's gonna have full, brand-new wardrobe. So I think that was wonderful. The kids never complained once, and it rained for a few days over there, they said, you know, the first day was beautiful, it was sunny, the second day, they were drenched, and then the sun came out, third day, drenched. The kids, they said that the kids never complained, they just wanted to keep seeing different things, going, doing different things, being involved in the activities that they had, they learned so much. And this tour guide, if you go on Twitter, and, I want to say, it's Mrs. Glynn, Mrs. Glynn, I think, took the post and a video. The video of their tour guide talking on the microphone, I watched it.
I saw that.
He was crying, because he was like, I've never had a bunch of kids so interested, and just so nice, and involved, and wanting to learn, and wanting to be part of everything. I'm gonna cry, I've even told my wife and my family about this, and the teachers that came down to see me, Mrs. Kruger, the kids just had a wonderful time. When we take our kids out of East Bridgewater and we bring them someplace else, we know that we can, we can be proud of who they are, where they're going, and we can be proud of the community that they come from, their parents, and our school system. So I'm very proud of that. I did email and tried to get ahold of Mrs. Celia while they were there, I was very nervous, as I told you in that, that one email that I sent out, that I think it brought to Enterprise, it called this Channel 5, called this Boston News, Channel 5, Boston News, Fox News report. I said to Mrs. Celia, I said, I hope one of the students journaled each day, or journaled that feeling of being on the streets with the people of France who live there every day, and what the feeling was about being over there. She said she wasn't sure yet, but they will be reporting out to us in another month. I've asked them to come back, so they can show you pictures and talk, and they're gonna bring kids. Both groups will be here on the same night with kids.
Well, there were a couple kids on news.
Yes, and a couple.
Who were extremely well-spoken, Mackenzie Eldridge, and there was another one, and I'm gonna forget the name, and I apologize for that, but very, I mean, really hit it out of the pocket, you know.
Yep, and by, they, you know, what they said to the, you know, I said to Mrs. Celia, just stay next to the kids when they're on the phone, or, because you never know, you don't want to sensationalize things. One of the papers asked Mrs. Celia, so you just got away, you just got out in time, and she says, no, we were back at the hotel, we had dinner, we had changed up for bed, we were certainly fine. They said, so it was a matter of minutes, and, you know. We were okay, and I want everybody to know that we're gonna continue to do trips the best that we can. This is something that we wouldn't have known that was happening, we certainly don't want to send our students ever to a place that we find that could possibly be dangerous. I do, we are going to be talking about going to a trip on Washington DC, which I'm thrilled about, because I do think kids need to know about government politics, they need to know history, they need to understand how things work, they need to understand the process, and I think it's wonderful, and that we're going, not this year, next year, and I've been pushing for that, and I was waiting for someone to say this, and we've, we've got a middle school group going, seventh, eighth grade. So, very pleased to hear that, and then, and then they're gonna ask you for some more trips. The next trip, you're gonna be like, ugh, but I'm gonna let them, I'm gonna let them tell you, not me.
They need chaperones to Washington DC, I'm happy to do that.
You love that.
That's amazing to think that years from now, they're gonna be able to tell people they were in the cathedral the day it caught fire. I mean, that's, they'll rebuild it, it'll probably never be the same, but, I mean, to say that they were one of the last groups there.
It is amazing. Jamil Siddiqui. Jamil Siddiqui is our Teacher of the Year, or Teacher of the Year of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. He has been traveling around the Commonwealth of Massachusetts this year, going to different places to speak, he's been in different forums, he's been at the Board of, the Department of Education's Board of Education. We're going to invite him, but I wanted him to, I wanted to get to the end of the year to see if we, if there was any more spectacular moments for him. He has been, he is one of, he'll be one of, what, 50 people, 51? 50 going down to Washington DC. He leaves for this week. He has numerous number of events he'll be going to, participating in many dinners, and going with the rest of the Teacher of the Years from each state. One of the nights will be recognition of National Teacher of the Year. So we'll see if he's National Teacher of the Year. If he is, I thought we would wait for that, and then we would invite him to a school committee meeting. And I think he's going to speak or do small engagements he talked a little bit about, but he is having dinner with the Vice President's wife?
That's what I heard.
Right. I got a memo from the Department of Ed, and that, they were telling me a little bit about his, where he'll be and what he's doing. But he was talking today, we were in a meeting today, and he was telling us.
Mrs. Gudelhavon, we said it's moment to moment, so exchange brief response.
His wife, his wife is a social studies teacher here at the high school. She asked to go with him. She also spoke to Dr. Williams about doing professional development while she was down there, and she's going to be taking pictures, writing about what she saw, getting and gathering a lot of information. And then when she comes back, she's going to be offering professional development to our faculty, and talking to our groups here, when she comes back on what she's learned being there. So I think it'd be great, too, for that, maybe, you know, be talking to the seventh and eighth graders next year when they do go to Washington DC. So, I think it's, you know, it's, it's a good timing for this. And the next, I'm going to rain on John's parade a little bit, but he's going to, but I'll let him have, I'll let him have his parade. On Tuesday, the Massachusetts School Building Authority was here to visit us at Central School. Myself, Kate, the MSBA, Brian Kylie, and John met with the new Town Administrator, Rocco Longo, was in the meeting. We had conversation about the building project, our boiler project that John's going to discuss this evening, and some other projects that I'm going to let John discuss. The one thing I wanted to get out to you is that I did ask the MSBA, what is the appetite for doing long-range renovations, as the Capitol Committee had asked me? To ask the MSBA, are they looking for big projects, small projects? What are they looking for? They couldn't really answer if they want to do more renovations, you know, there's still people doing big $175 million projects. But I can tell you, the appetites are going down for those types, and I'm hearing from my colleagues that it's hard to build a big school now. It's hard to get people to, this building right now, probably $135, $140 million, wouldn't be the $75 million that it was seven years ago. Building materials are going up, you know, the price of things are, are increasing. However, when I asked the question, he said, now that we've been in the queue for the last three years, we continue to keep getting looked at because we're getting the money up front, and we keep writing these articles from the year before. We're ready to start this next project that John's going to discuss, because last year, we decided that this is something very important for us. Capitol thought it was important for us to continue with the Central School, because we needed windows and roofs and this and that. We had put money up forward so that we could get the feasibility studies, so that we could get the studies done for this. They see that, they are more prone to continue to help. And they were saying, our project for the boiler is 56% reimbursed. Right now, some projects are being reimbursed, he told us the other day, 58.6%. You know, so we're knocking on wood, they're going up a little bit, which is great, which is great for us. So Kate was excited about it, right Kate? In case we have to, if we have to move kids around and this and that, but I'll let John take over. But the nice part is, we met with MSBA, they've invited us to, we hope, the June meeting, so that they see our faces, that we're very interested, that we do have the, the funds to continue to move forward with another project. I feel positive that the Capitol Group is going to promote this along with Mr. Longo. He has been, I wish you, he's going to come to a meeting to introduce himself to everybody tonight, he had different, had another engagement. He has been very good to meet, to work with so far. We've already met twice, he's met with John once, so things are moving very quickly. And I wasn't, he, he's come down here, he walked down and saw us, which is, out of the blue, came in and just to, just to talk to us. So, it was very nice for Rocco to do that. So John, why don't you finish up?
Well, I've got a lot to go through.
Well, I thought you might just tell us, what, what's the big surprise?
I've got a list of a lot.
What's the next one, John? The.
Roof?
The roof at Central School. We're hoping to get in the queue for that next.
They came out to visit us for the, for the, we filed a grant in February, so they came out to visit, to take a look at the roof. If they come out to visit, it's a very good sign. So we find out June 26th whether we are invited into the beginning of the program. We don't, there, there's no promise to, for us to spend money, it has to go through town meeting, and a lot of schematic design and all that, but it's, it's a good sign that they came out to visit, and we'll go in the, June 26th to see what happens.
Are we far enough along in any kind of process, John, to identify, I think, back when I was on Capitol, we talked about the roof. And it has a slate roof, which typically lasts a lifetime, but I know it needs repair, and so it's probably more costly to do the repair than it is, is, is the plan to take the whole, all the slate off?
Yes.
And, and put on an asphalt roof?
Asphalt.
Okay.
The other thing is the, the trim, the.
Yeah.
Cup, cup, you look, couple of.
Couple.
Couple of, those are all in dire need of repair, the woods are rotting, gutters. So this grant would include all that.
And the mods. They went down and looked at those.
Right, but the mods wouldn't be included in the.
No, but they did look at them, to get, you know, to keep us, it'll keep us in the queue, you know, the more we continue to look at, more continue to get, to have them here, I think it's.
So there's a lot of work we have to do with the Capitol Committee, bring them up to speed and, and work with them, because they, they obviously have to be on board.
The roof is down, occasionally submitted for this round, right?
Yes, yes, the one we filed in February.
Is the process of this similar to what we went through with the boiler, where we have the special town meeting to ask for the funding? Okay.
We just got all that.
That would be in the fall theoretically?
Well, we, we had a special town meeting because of the, of the timing.
Right.
So depending on, on the timing.
Okay.
More than likely, it would be a special town meeting.
Just to suggest, and maybe it's already part of the process, but I know we had an outside agency come in and do an assessment as to, these are all the different things that need to get done, and here's the sequence that makes the most sense. So, I think to keep, if that's in fact the case, to keep referencing the sequence, so people are not surprised that, you know, this, this is how much work has to get done. But I know when we looked at it at Capitol, we, we knew the town was not going to have the appetite to build a whole new building. And it's kind of nice to have a building that age in town and well cared for, once we get there. So, I, I think, I'd keep referencing, there's more to come.
Right.
As happy as we are at this point in time, there's still more work to be done.
We have two great studies that were done, one on the interior, one on the exterior.
Right.
And there's also another one that's going to be happening soon, and that is regarding timing of the project, whether it makes sense to prolong these renovations over 10 years, or whether it makes sense to get some modular buildings for a couple of years, and just do the whole thing in a couple of years, so.
You mean, got it, basically?
Yeah.
Bring them out for two, you know, 24 to, you know, 48 months, and bring the mods, and go down to Mitchell School, put them all over the fields. As I tell these guys at principal meetings, they look at it like, what is going on? I said, didn't you see the trucks out there measuring? Did you see the guys out measuring, Kate?
I saw them.
So, obviously, we have a new high school, we're putting a lot of money and time into Central, anything upcoming with Mitchell? I mean, is there anything?
Yeah.
In the next.
Well, technology upgrades, we, for the Capitol Committee, for the Capitol projects we submitted this year, wireless upgrade for middle and central school.
That's the heat map, the steam.
Right. Wireless, we actually, we actually have an E-rate program where we would get 50% reimbursement on that. There's a handicap ramp that needs reimbursement, needs to be replaced. We're looking at the old shop, possibility of renovating that into before and aftercare. Tomorrow, we find out about a grant I filed.
Right.
To, security grant, that's $53,000 security grant. Last year, we did the Makerspace.
Speaking of the Makerspace, we, Tori Cameron just came back, Victoria Cameron just came back after her maternity leave. On maternity leave, I sent her an email, because she has the steam room, and I said, if you write about the steam room and our, and our students, and all the, all the great stuff that you're going to, that you're doing, I sent it to Andrew and Mr. Gentile and Mrs. Cameron about getting a robot. And they called us today, called Andrew today, and told them that Mitchell School will have a robot.
Oh, great.
And so the kids will be able to program it.
Oh.
And work with it, and Andrew won't have an office anymore. We'll have a robot down there, it's like Stop and Shop. So we're really, Tori's done a tremendous job with that program, and, but it's exciting. And the steam room has been acknowledged as a possible winner of Steam Room of the Year, Teacher of Technology of the Year.
Very impressive.
It is very, for our first year of having that, we, we.
Are they using that steam room in the after-school group, too?
Yes.
Because my son's in that.
Yep, and we're looking to, we're going to do more robotics, and that's, her goal is to get us more going into that direction, so.
My son couldn't stop talking about steam at Easter with his grandparents, all afternoon long.
They got the new bot, they got the little bots.
He's in the Thursday program.
Things like that. But this is going to be, I think. Andrew, watch out.
We're also painting the cafeteria this summer.
At the Mitchell School. We are, yeah, they're going to clean it and paint it, and Deb Vaughn's going to help with that, the food revolving account will do all that, and she's got some new equipment going into the Mitchell School, so.
I'd like to think that we can learn from the experience of the old high school, being a, a brick building, which essentially should have lasted a long time, and didn't, and for who knows what reasons, I wasn't certainly here to understand them all, but certainly was, bits of it were in disrepair, and also, hopefully, we learn from that to say, you know, we'd rather keep up what we have than have to scrape it and build a new one. And the Mitchell School probably, and certainly the Central School that we're working on, but the Mitchell School fits that, that, that plan as well, that, you know, it takes, as much as we don't want to spend money, you, you need to spend it to keep up the assets you do have, so. It's good.
Wasn't the robot, the school, the steam room chosen for the robot out of over 100 schools, 100 people that had applied for that?
Awesome.
That's great.
Tori is, Tori's a go-getter, you know? It's good.
Thank you.
Right here. Can you wait a little longer?
We have Mrs. Kate Byrne with the Central School Principal, and Mr. Gentile, Gordon W. Mitchell.
And Mrs. No.
No middle school.
We got Mrs. No.
Mitchell School. I didn't get to that. Principal, and we also have Miss Noise with us.
She injured, that was very quick.
I think you're all three of you are coming up, I think she's calling you up.
You can even, sure, if you want to, however you guys want to do it, it's fine with me. You take turns.
We'll take turns.
It's Miss Noise, she's not, she's not written on here. I'm guessing she's having a turn tonight, too.
Good evening, it's nice to see everyone. Awesome. Well, welcome. I'm Kate Byrne, the Principal of Central School. I thought I'd start tonight, and just give you a little update on our preschool registration and kindergarten registration numbers for next year. Preschool registration began in January, we held our screenings in February. Currently, right now, for next year, we are anticipating, we have 107 students enrolled in our preschool program. We do have short waiting lists that we are accumulating, and based on those waiting lists, if I have enough to secure another classroom, then it might be something that we consider. But as most of you know, I think, or maybe all of you, we do have a revolving account for preschool tuition, so the tuitions we collect pay the salaries of the staff. So we need to have enough to make a full class in order to operate a room. I'm anticipating we'll have one five-day full-day program, which serves our four-year-old students. We will have one session of our three-day full-day program, which runs on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, that's also for four-year-olds. And we will have one session of our two-day full-day, which is Tuesday, Thursdays, and that's for three-year-old students. We then will have two sessions, two sessions each of our typical traditional half-day program for both the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and the Tuesday, Thursday. So we'll have the AM session and PM session for both. The difference between this current year, we're currently, we have 138 students enrolled in preschool, and the difference really is, is that we have two sets of the three-day full-day, and two sets of the two-day full-day. Right now, I just don't have the interest to run those two programs. But we're pleased with the 107, and like I said, we'll continue to have a waiting list for parents as well. We did fill up pretty quickly, the first round of all of those classrooms, and we do tend to still get preschool students enrolling and registering throughout the summer. As far as kindergarten, kindergarten registration has been going well. We currently have 146 students registered for next year. That is the class of 2032 that will be joining us, if you can believe that. Yes, I know. Right now, that's relatively close to what we have this year. Currently, my enrollment in kindergarten is 143. So I'll anticipate to still have seven kindergarten classrooms next year. And our kindergarten parent night is Wednesday, May 15th at 6:00. If anybody has an incoming kindergarten student, we welcome you to come that night, join us at the cafeteria at Central School, learn a little bit about our kindergarten program, and then you'll also get to see a day in the life of kindergarten from their point of view as well. The next thing I'd like to mention is, I always love coming and sharing about our One Central book that we do at Central School, and this is perfect timing. We are in our third term, and we're beginning our last book for the year. And this is actually our fourth book on the district's theme of resiliency. Started with the summer reading, and then we've carried it on through the year at One Cent, through One Central Book. So I do have a book for everybody on the committee, and to let you know that our book is A Chair For My Mother by Vera B. Williams. It's a wonderful story, it's a Caldecott award-winning book, and talks about a young girl and her experience with her family. They experienced a house fire, and how they overcome that, and how they work and persevere to save money to buy this special chair for their mom. I won't say too much more, that's basic, you can get that from the cover and the back, but it's a great story, and I hope that you enjoy it, so I'll be sure to pass that out to you. We'll be sharing that with students, faculty, and staff. They'll start reading that on May 6th. I'll make sure you get a copy as well, Liz, it's a great story. Just to make sure that all members are aware of the One Central Book, the philosophy with One Central Book at Central School is that all members of our community, all faculty, from cafeteria staff to custodians, to main office workers, to our physical education teachers, everybody reads this piece of literature at the same time. So that way, we can engage conversation with students about the same topic, same theme. And so it's just a wonderful way for us to still be connected. So we've extended that, we share that with school committee, we share it with Central Office, with the Superintendent's Office as well, so that way, everybody can be part of the conversation.
And when we walk around, we ask questions.
That's right. What was the favorite part of the story? Or what did you think when this happened? That's the purpose, yes. That's what we hope cultivates from it. The next thing I'll just mention is our assessment timeline. Quickly, we're approaching our spring assessment period, that will be beginning for us, May 6th and going through May 26th, about a three-week stretch of period of time, where we will stretch of period of time, where we will once again administer the MAP assessment for students in grades K through 2. That will give us our opportunity to capture student growth from fall. We did our mid-check monitoring in winter, and now we'll have that spring result as well, to then be able to share with parents, student growth reports that they'll get at the end of the year, to see students' growth in the area of their RIT scores based on the MAP assessment. And for us, that's in the area of reading and in math. During that time, we also will have students take the year-end assessment for DIBELS in both K1 and 2, and again, we'll be looking at student growth in that area of early basic reading skills and fluency skills. The goal with that information is that we then review and analyze that, not only share it with parents, but then it's an opportunity for me to then revisit with staff and with the teachers, to talk about, okay, let's look at student growth over the course of the year, individual student, whole class growth, and then we have an opportunity to reflect about what worked well, and maybe where we can make adjustments and improvements going forward for the year, for next year. So that will be coming up as well. Placement will also quickly be approaching, and that will be placement for us moving forwards from grades K to 1, 1 to 2, and 2 to 3. That placement period, we'll be doing the third week in May. Prior to that, students, teachers will be filling out placement cards, give us some basic information, and from there, we'll start creating classrooms for next year. A big part of that is collaborating with Mr. Gentile and Mrs. Dupre at Middle School for our second to third grade students. We already have meetings scheduled to begin our transition conversations, starting early in May, continuing on throughout the month of May, and into June. And then on Wednesday, June 5th, will actually be the Transition Night held at Mitchell School for our second-grade families, to then get a tour, hear from Mr. Gentile and Mrs. Dupre about third grade and life at the Mitchell School. So all of that will be coming up soon. I also wanted to update you, the last time I was here, I had mentioned that we had the opportunity to increase our partnership with Bridgewater State University. At that time, I shared with you that we had just introduced math work, and for those that may, that worked here at that last meeting that I attended in January, at that time, we were working with Dr. Patty Emmons, who was coming in with her college students on math methods, and they were partnering up with second-grade classrooms, and they were piloting this experience where the college students would be coming in and helping to facilitate small group learning in the area of geometry, is kind of where we started. And it's a great opportunity for us to individualize instruction, to support those college students who are learning how to individualize and differentiate lessons for students, and collaborate with our teachers and the professor at Bridgewater State. The new addition that I'd like to add, in addition to that one that we talked about in January, is that we do now also have Dr. Jean Engel from Bridgewater State, who's working in collaboration with Ms. Tellis in kindergarten, and they're talking about technology in the Early Learning Center. So Dr. Engel has been bringing her Bridgewater State students to collaborate and work with students one-to-one and groups of two, in some cases, on how to use technology in the Early Learning Center, and here in particular, to kindergarten. So they've really been talking about how do we use some apps to really individualize and target instruction for kids, and also make it interest-based, and even at times connect it to STEM. But you really can target where a student is and their individual abilities, so it's been a great experience, but I did want to share that with you as well. We have many special events that are up and coming. I won't share all of my lists, but I'll just give you a couple of highlights in case you also like to attend, you may have also been, received some invitations. But May 2nd, next week, we do have the second-grade spring concert that is here at the junior/senior high school.
I love watching that.
So that is, that's next week on the 2nd.
What time is that?
It's usually, I'll get back to you, okay? But that's next week.
I can't even look at Andrew.
I do also want to let you know that we have the kindergarten, everything okay?
I can't even look at Andrew after yesterday's meeting. Yeah.
We have the kindergarten patriotic concert, that will be coming up on Thursday, May 23rd, and that is also here at the junior/senior high school.
That was a good one, too.
It's a wonderful one. It's, it's the best, what they've spent, it's usually about 15 minutes, that's about 15 to 20 minutes, but I'm just a fan of hearing children sing, I find it to be very moving and emotional, and when you hear a bunch of kindergartners sing patriotic songs, in great care and respect for their country, and pledge to their Central School and to their flag, it's very powerful and moving, and it's right before Memorial Day weekend, so the timing is perfect. If you can be there, we'd love you to come. I already mentioned the Transition Night, we do have field trips that are going on, many of which you're already aware of, because you've approved them, the after-state field trips, the second graders going to the zoo, first graders going to the biomes, those will all be coming up. And then we do have our Field Day, June 7th, that's usually a big event for the community, they love that.
Is Ms. Tellis going in the...
Dunk tank, she always does.
Mr. McMahon?
Always. Mr. Trout, absolutely.
Mr. Trout, Mrs. Nichols?
Mrs. Nichols. I will be, yes, in the tank.
Dr. Williams?
Will the superintendent be going in the dunk tank?
Dr. Williams?
Liz, I give you an open invitation. Come and join us. I hope for a nice...
Yeah, you guys put cold water in there.
Right out of the hose.
What day is that happening?
That's Friday, the 7th of June. We do have, the rain date would be the following Monday, but I'll bet it goes according to plan, and that it would be on June 7th. Well, I did want to back up, I was kind of going in order, but the Brockton Rocks, the second graders will be singing at the Brockton Rocks, and that's actually going to be on Friday, May 41st, for any families that might be interested in attending. You don't have to be a second grader or second-grade family to attend the event, but it's a wonderful night, it's a great opportunity. The second graders sing the National Anthem, and then they get to watch a wonderful baseball game, and there's fireworks at the end.
My own school's night at the Brockton Rocks game, too.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, whole house.
So we're having an argument on where I'm going to sit, right now.
They'll sing in the National Anthem, you said?
Yes. Yes, they will be singing the National Anthem. And on June 7th, which was Field Day, we also will have our year-end barbecue, which is sponsored by the PTO at Central School. This is our third year of the barbecue, we hold it here at the field, and we'd like to thank the Athletic Boosters, they're always so kind to let us use the concession stands and the high school for letting us use that, but that's a wonderful night, well-attended by the families, and so if you're around and can come by, 5:30, barbecue. That's all I have. I don't know if there are any, any questions at this time.
It's all great.
Thank you.
It's exciting news. Thank you.
You're very welcome, nice to see you all. I'll just leave these here for later. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. I will be, I'll be sure to return my book after I read it.
Well, and you're welcome to pass it on. I, I do get these specially for you, so I always encourage passing on a great book and a good book, hand it down to someone you know who'll enjoy it.
Thank you.
John?
Do you want my coffee?
Kate, we'll bring, John would like one.
Got it.
So we can discuss it.
Read the ending.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening, Andrew.
I really need to learn to start bringing gifts or treats or something.
Bring the robot next time.
Maybe we will.
There you go.
Yeah. Nice to see you all, welcome to the new members, knowing both of you, I know you're great additions to the committee, so welcome. Just going to run through a few things, and then also happy to answer any questions. Big happenings right now at the Mitchell School is just the administration of the MCAS test. Today, we finished up the administration of ELA, so all grades 3 through 6 have completed that. We have a handful of students that need to do makeups, but beyond that, we've had full participation and excellent effort and focus by students throughout the ELA portion, which is usually, from a focus and stamina standpoint, is usually the most challenging administration. Next week, we start the administration of math, begins with grades 5 and 6, then grade 3 the following week, and grade 4 the week of May 13th. In addition to that, grade 5 will also be taking the science MCAS, which will be the last test that we give, which are taking place May 16th and 17th, so.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Lot of testing going on, however, I can say, since the implementation of the computer-based testing, I, from an administration standpoint, it's very smooth and simple, there's far fewer things to track within the building when testing is going on, which is very helpful. And in addition to that, any concerns that we may have had initially about transitioning kids from the paper test to the computer-based test have really been alleviated, I think in large part due to our students' experience with the Chromebooks, with MAP testing, with interacting with the technology daily, it just seems typical to them, which has been great. The kids really have seemed at ease, I'm really proud of them. As kids are testing, we're frequently floating around the building and checking in the classrooms, and kids are really working hard, and I attribute that both to, you know, their hard work, their understanding of the importance of it, the work that the teachers have done with the students all year long to prepare them, and also not to stress them out about the test, and then obviously families just being supportive and, and understanding that this is an important piece of the education process for our kids. To add to that, as Ms. Byrne mentioned, at Central School, we'll be also doing the MAP assessment for the end of the year. In the fall and in the winter, students at the Mitchell School took the reading, math, and language tests. In the spring, they will just be taking the reading and math, and primarily, that's a result of just the amount of testing that's going on right now, and the language test we've used throughout the year to help direct instruction, as we have with the reading and math, but from a, an evaluative standpoint of the data and looking at student growth, we're really focused on the reading and the math tests, so we really want to, you know, kind of keep the focus on those, too. We have a similar window, it opens May 6th and goes to the end of May. Teachers are free to administer the test as it works within their schedule, so that we don't have this huge testing blocks, and even to that end, we've recommended to teachers that they give the test in chunks, as opposed to sit down for two hours and just bang out the test, but to maybe, you know, any variety of different things to try and mix it up a little bit, and give kids the opportunity to perform the best that they can. The MAP data, I've said this before, and I'll just briefly say it again, has been incredibly useful and informative for teachers, for administrators, for parents, and just to give an example, I mean, we're, we're using the data on a regular basis, we're helping, we're using it to help direct what happens with whole classrooms, we're using the information to help direct what happens with individual students. It's incredibly informative and incredibly useful, great investment by the district that I can assure you is being used very frequently and effectively.
Andrew, I have a question on that.
Sure.
Kate, you can probably chime in, too, but as far as the MAP testing, as a parent, I've seen the results over, you know, the years since the district started doing it, and I think it's a great, great tool, but to the extent that it's used to reorient the class as far as for your higher learners or those that may need more support, is there any data being kept on that, as far as how, you know, the changes are being implemented from the testing to the classroom?
Yep, definitely. After each administration, I know at Mitchell School anyway, we have the opportunity to meet as groups and to look at what does the data show and what does that now mean for us? So, to give an example, in some instances, recently, after the winter administration, and also in conjunction with the last term, in 5th and 6th grade, we use that data as well as some other information that we get regularly to help reorganize some groups of students, and each time that we have made a, an alteration or a decision based on the MAP data, we're tracking that, definitely, because the thing is, is though, we don't often make those type of changes or alterations to a group or to, even to a classroom, without also consulting some other information, you know, like, to use that in isolation...
Of course.
Would be putting almost too much weight into it, but it's a great first step for us to look at, and then to consult some other data points, and then from those, you know, all of those combined, be able to make an informed decision. But when we, when we do make those changes, we are tracking them.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Just to speak briefly about something that was already mentioned, with regard to the STEAM lab, you know, first of all, I think many of you have children that have experienced it, it has been unquestionably the greatest addition to the school in my time here, and it was just an idea that a few of us had, shared the idea, the superintendent couldn't have been more supportive, giving us the opportunity to go out and see other places, and, you know, providing us the support to make it happen. John Shea has been critical in making everything come to life that you see in there, in terms of all of the different things that we've purchased and being able to access those things, and then obviously, Tori Cameron has taken a program that didn't exist and turned it into something that I think pretty much all kids at the Mitchell School are talking about at some point and in some way. She was a finalist for Massachusetts STEM Teacher of the Year, which is something that's through the Patriots Hall of Fame, their educational division. She went for an interview, did find out that she was not selected as the STEM Teacher of the Year, however, was a finalist, and as a result of that, earned a $1,000 grant to put into something for the lab, so we'll be talking about that, John. But as the superintendent mentioned, Mrs. Cameron is a go-getter. We needed somebody like that in that position to demonstrate how transitioning, what was the library into this interactive space that, you know, I couldn't have even imagined where we are now when we set out on this project, I kind of thought we'd be where we are now, a year or two down the road. On May 13th, Monday, May 13th, MasQ, which is a Massachusetts organization for technology and education, is coming out to visit the STEAM lab. That's actually how we got some of our ideas, was going on MasQ visits, and they're coming out and highlighting our STEAM lab for other educators in Massachusetts to check it out and see what we have going on. So exciting opportunities, just keep, keep happening, so.
You know, no causing any disruption, can we see it?
See what?
The lab?
Absolutely.
Is there a good time to do that, or hopefully we can talk about it offline perhaps afterward?
Just call Andrew, he'll bring you in.
I would love, I would love to get my eyeballs on that. Definitely, what I'd like to do is coordinate with Mrs. Cameron so that we could maximize your visit. Yep. And maybe try and create a couple of opportunities, just, you know, I know everybody has varying schedules, but some different opportunities for you all and the public to come in. We had, we hosted a night earlier in the school year, and we have some plans already for the fall of next year to kind of do a kickoff event in the STEM lab and highlight some of those new, new components.
I want to see this robot.
Yeah, actually, not to continue on this, but there's just so much happening with it. Mrs. Cameron applied for a grant from MasQ and was awarded the grant, it was $3,000. With that, we were able to purchase a Nintendo program, which incorporates the Nintendo Switch, which is a handheld device, but there are STEAM components and packages that go along with it, so that kids can create and program various things, so there's a robot, a robot kit that they create, there's a vehicle kit, and then the other one is a mix of some different things. So we were able to get six Nintendo Switches and six of each of the kits to be incorporated into the program. I anticipate that those will see sunlight before the end of the year, but I really, I already know that, you know, the plans that we have for next year to incorporate it will be, will be fantastic, so that $3,000 grant that we received will go to good use, and again, wouldn't have happened without the initiative that Mrs. Cameron has taken.
Excuse me, Andrew.
Yes.
For the folks at home, could you explain what STEAM stands for?
Sure. STEAM is an acronym which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. So it really is trying to take a whole range of different skills that students often learn in isolation, and put them into real-world applications, which sometimes are very technology-based and other times are very, very far from technology-based and very simple, simple tools and simple supplies and things of that nature, but really trying to take all of those different skills from math, technology, engineering, the arts, all of that, and finding ways to bring all of those skills together and apply them.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Just a couple of last things. Recently, been coordinating with Dr. Williams and the Chief of Police, as well as our school resource officers, around bringing some programming to our 6th graders. Up until, I think last year it was, we had the DARE program, and, you know, for those of us that are involved with these things and are looking at these type of programs, the DARE program, although it still exists, I think that, you know, we were looking for something that was a bit more applicable for our students, able to be directed to things that we're trying to tackle here in East Bridgewater, and also to have a real research-based program that we could expose our students to. So we are using a program which is called the BotVIN Life Skills Program. It's a BotVIN, B-O-T-V-I-N, that's the last name of the, the author of the program, and we will be sort of piloting this program over the month of May with our 6th graders. Our school resource officer, Talitha Connor, as well as Cecilia Cacciatore, will be working with our 6th grade classrooms and our 6th grade teachers to provide some of the lessons to our students from the program, to sort of get a feel for it, and also to ensure that they hit on a few important topics with kids. they hit on a few important topics with kids before the end of the year and certainly before our sixth graders go up to the junior, senior high school. A couple of those topics will be things like marijuana use, vaping, things of that nature. I'm working with the school resource officer now to just finalize what kids will be exposed to as far as the lessons go this year. And I anticipate the beginning of next week, a letter going out to all sixth grade parents, which will kind of give an overview of the program as well as the particular topics that students will be working with so that if parents have any questions or concerns or they want to be prepared to kind of have those conversations at home to follow up, which is always important, that they'll be prepared for that and won't be caught off guard. And certainly when sixth grade parents get the information about the program, if there are any questions, you know, please, please reach out to us so that we can address those. Lastly, next week, we've been preparing to send out to parents sort of an end-of-the-year list of various things that are going on. We have a whole range of different things from sort of small scale to really big scale, and we don't want to miss anything and we don't want anyone else to miss it either. So we've been just trying to reach out to everybody and make sure we've checked all the calendars and have a comprehensive list. When that goes out next week, it will go out in hard copy and via email to all parents. And we will also make sure that all members of the committee get a copy of that so that if there are things you would like to be involved with or that you're just curious about, you know, you'll have that information and certainly would love to have you at any of those events and you're always welcome to join us. So that's all I have for tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, I think that was great information.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
You'll send us to the STEAM lab?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you all.
Thanks, Andrew.
Andrew, good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Ms. Noyes. Welcome.
Hello, everybody.
Hi there.
Hello.
Welcome to the new members.
Thank you.
I don't know if everyone knows me, but I'm Tara Noyes, the Assistant Principal here at the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School. I have a few of our April updates and then I'll go into half of May because the bottom half of May into June will be for another school committee meeting, I think, because there's so much going on. So we are also finishing up MCAS testing with the eighth grade just finished ELA, who will be going into math and to biology and the sciences moving forth. I'd like to give credit to Karen Clifford, who did an amazing job with her guidance staff to make sure that this was run extremely well. It's the first year that everything was online. So also with the technology department, they did an amazing job making sure all the kids' Chromebooks were ready, they had enough plugs, when a Chromebook wasn't working, that there were backups. So everything has run so far extremely smoothly, so I definitely would like to give them credit for that. In the nurses' office, we have ESPTERT going on, which is an alcohol prevention program where the school nurses have been asking about use of alcohol and how it may either affect themselves or their family members if there are other concerns that they may have as they're going through the school year.
And that is an initiative from the Department of Education that we needed to begin two years ago. We had to get into the, we had to do this from the Department of Ed, had to start in 217, it's 218, began in 217. We had to start talking to eighth graders.
Yep.
About what they've been involved in or what they have seen.
Right, and isn't it seven and nine this year or something?
Seven and ninth grade, and it lasts probably three to five minutes. So they've been doing also the eyes and ears, the vision testing, so they've kind of incorporated that and the faculty's been very, very flexible.
What we call.
Yes, and the others, nurses that have helped her out in the district too, so we appreciate that.
You may not be the right person to answer this question. It may be the nurse, but what happens with that data?
So basically, they would.
Like, does it go to the state or does it like go to, like, say a kid revealed something that, in other words, is it data for us to use to help a kid or is it data that we just report to the state? In other words, is it confidential or?
It's both.
Both.
Yep. So then, of course, we would try to get them some help, you know, with the starting in guidance and then offer them some therapy or if the family needed help for, you know, home therapy or going to Al-Anon or Alateen or those types of things. So just basically another avenue of resources for people to get help if there's any issues. We had a pre-prom meeting this week and I'd like to thank Patrick Nevens, who was from the Plymouth District Attorney's Office, who talked about social hosting, and Chief Allen, who gave a great speech on keeping our students safe and the value of making good choices before and after the prom. We had our E-Hope members there that were helping with the sign-ins, so our Coalition members were there to help get all our parents in. We only had about 24 parents that were not able to make it, and we do have the presentation on tape, so we have been showing it all day today to the students that weren't able to make it during a directed learning. And the parents have come in on their own time, whether it was morning, afternoon, or after school. So that's been very successful.
What is our transportation policy on prom? Do we mandate, like, do we look at getting coaches for the kids like a lot of schools are doing or do they provide their own?
They usually provide their own transportation.
Yeah.
But there were some conversations about this this year, talking about maybe doing some things, coming back to the school. A lot of schools are coming back to the school and doing all-night, the all-night lock-in.
Regular lock-ins or?
Yeah. They're starting to talk about it, they had a little conversation about it, but they'd already, you're already, these proms get planned now, almost a year in advance.
Oh, right, we need to look at it next year now. That is our prom.
The junior prom is at Indian Pond and the senior prom is at Lake Pearl. Let's see. We had a lot of parents, like I said, very, very happy with the parent turnout, and I know that that can be an inconvenience or just kind of scheduling everybody in different things. So I'd like to thank the parents for being so supportive because this topic is probably one of the most important ones that we can to, you know, focus on to keep all of our students safe. We have our amazing art show coming up this weekend that I hear is fantastic, so I'm definitely looking forward to going to it and having a little music played by the band on Saturday. So the Friday night show is from 8:00 to 5:00 and Saturday is from 12:00 to 5:00. On Monday, I reached out to Mark, the Mark Program, which is from Bridgewater State University. This is a program on bullying and cyberbullying, so all of our seventh through 10th grade will be seeing that on Monday as a follow-up to our bullying campaign that Beth Pennington did an amazing job with and all her friends to promote that last month. So this is a follow-up event that'll be held in the auditorium. And then we have the grand march coming up in prom, May 3rd, at Indian Pond from 6:00 to 10:00. We have AP exams starting the second and third week of May. On May 6th, we have a play by our drama group that is called "What I Have Always Wanted to Say But Never Would." And this will be for high school only, this performance during school, and it's all about how to deal with social and emotional different components in life.
When is that again?
May 6th, so it'll be second block of the day for ninth and 10th grade and third block for 11th and 12th grade. Then we have the Credit for Life Fair coming up on the 17th, as well as the Red Cross Blood Drive, which will be the same day. Our seventh and eighth grade as well are continuing with the MAP testing, I know for sure, and a lot of our seventh and eighth grade teachers have definitely said it's been a positive experience with them and really have been able to show a lot of individual growth for our students. So I think that is definitely a valuable tool to keep investing on. And then our classes have been picked, our students have picked some of their courses for next year. We are looking at new schedules being reviewed and we will be taking our staff to see Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, to look at the schedule that we might be looking forward to doing right now for next year as a draft. I do have a copy of a draft for us and so we'll take probably about 12 teachers, myself, Karen Clifford will probably go as well, to see how they like their schedule and how it works for them, if we can, you know, adopt it here to make it work for our students. And then we'll be looking at a few other schedules as well. And then I handed out to you just the letter that is going to be going out to the senior parents with all the dates and upcoming events, starting everything from the senior class meetings to graduation, the times. And then the backside, all the graduation information for the day and the tickets. And then I just shared a tentative schedule with you, what the EB Credit for Life Fair would look like as well.
Lot going on?
Yes, and that's only halfway through May. We haven't done our seventh grade, you know, sixth grade step update, graduation for eighth grade, seventh and eighth grade dances and field trips. So we've got a lot of great things going on for our community.
Good.
Busy, busy time of year.
Yes. I'm open to questions or thoughts or concerns.
Yep. Did you say we have the schedule of what's going on?
All the way in the back.
Letter. Which one's in the screen?
Looks like this.
Yeah, that's the one that Ms. Noyes passed around. And I'll just pass these schedules. This is a draft of what could possibly be put down for next year.
Do other schools just use this in addition to West Bridgewater?
Yeah, this is the West Bridgewater one that we're looking at.
West Bridgewater has a seven through 12.
Right, same exact process.
I talked to Dr. Oakley today and she said that we could call over to Mark, Principal of their high school, junior, senior high school, and have a couple of, have a couple of groups go over. Instead of all 12 at one time, we'll take a couple of groups over.
Sure. How long, do you know how long West Bridgewater's been using the schedule?
Many, many years. I talked to Dr. Oakley today. They had it years ago when she was a teacher, then she left, came back as an administrator, as you know, and they brought it back because they liked, they liked the longer, the longer time. They put a lot of professional development into learning how to teach in the longer block. You know, not everybody, I'm sorry.
They have five lunches.
Yes.
Wow.
Well, we're overcrowded in our lunches.
Yeah.
So we, some of our kids aren't getting through lunches, some of the, not finding any table space.
They need 30 minutes for lunch.
I don't think I can.
Seventh and eighth grade do not need 30 minutes.
You don't.
They eat fast and they're ready to go outside.
I couldn't eat anything.
That's why we have the TVs in there.
Yeah.
On ESPN. Tell Mr. Leonard to put them on.
So, just out of curiosity, so when the kids, they're on a bell, so here you're on a bell system, right?
Mm-hmm.
So when the kids, is there a bell that goes off when it's time for lunch or the kids, the teachers just know when it's time to send the kids to lunch and they just go?
Yeah, so there's a bell at the beginning and the end, but in the middle there is not.
They have, they have teachers in there.
Yep.
And Mrs. Noyes is in there. Patrick, Patrick Leonard pretty much is in there.
You're teaching class during that period, you just have to keep an eye on the clock.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
From what I hear, I guess some teachers send the kids whenever they're supposed to send them and then some teachers hold on to the kids and send them until exactly the time so they don't, I don't know, I guess some kids might be getting an extra couple of minutes.
Well, to be honest, with so many students coming in at once, it's not really a bad thing because then it staggers people coming in versus crowds of people coming in. We don't encourage the teachers, obviously, to let them out earlier, but some of them do sneak out because they are starving and will do anything to make that happen. But everybody should be on the same schedule.
What do you mean by a bell, like, first and last? So if we have four lunches going on, they only bring in the beginning of the first one and at the end of the fourth one?
Right, to go to the next block.
I got you.
So the classrooms aren't being disturbed with a bell ringing.
Seventh and eighth grade eat lunch independently of the high school kids?
Yes. So seventh grade is first lunch, eighth grade is second lunch, and then two high school lunches next.
So one question about the schedule, and we had talked about this at school council. Once the teachers go and visit West Bridgewater, will this schedule come up for discussion amongst us? Because I do have some questions that I had shared in the school council meeting, so I'll defer to then.
I think they're going to look, they may go to Plymouth North and Plymouth South also use this schedule. The schedule is popular among many high schools. There's many versions out there. There's the four-by-four. There's a four-by-four with, on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, doing a 90-minute block schedule, and then Tuesdays and Thursdays, you're running a seven-block schedule. So the kids have shorter periods, like 42-minute classes, and they go from each person because in the block schedule, you're seeing 90 minutes, then the next day you might catch up a little bit, then get to something, and then the 90 minutes.
Can we, when it comes here for discussion, have a couple guests here who operate that schedule now, just so we can hear their feedback too? You know, somebody from West Bridgewater or?
We've had them here, but I can certainly ask them if they could come.
Oh, yeah, you can't require them, but I'm saying.
They can ask them to come to a 7 o'clock meeting, but I can tell you that we have had the West Bridgewater principal talk to our principal. We had Plymouth North, the curriculum director, come up with both Plymouth North and Plymouth South. Dr. Williams had called in, a couple of other assistant superintendents who are running these types of schedules, and there was another schedule as well.
Stoughton.
Stoughton was a different schedule they looked at. They've come and they've met with the principals and guidance. Karen Clifford knows many guidance counselors and directors out there, she's been calling in. Just to let you know, prior to this building being built, these high school staff had gone out and looked at multiple, multiple schedules, none which they had taken. They created one and Mr. Viera created one. They chose the one they created when they came here. They have made adjustments to it, they have added things, taken things out, moved it around, done some things. What we're looking for is a student-friendly schedule that allows an instructor to develop their lesson, to be more of a facilitator, and allow kids to be able to dig deeper. Sometimes moving at a 57-minute pace, it's quick. If we can get, and we're looking at a little longer time. That's how the discussion came up two years ago, as we started to say, let's implement this in the, in the, in the school year 219-220. It is now 219-220. We had a conversation today. Our teachers are, they're nervous about it because it's now we're moving to a longer period. And where's the professional development? We're willing to give it, we're willing to go out. I thought some of these things had, had been done, but so now we're here and so we're looking at it and we'll see what, see where we're going with it.
Do we have enough time, having this discussion in May, to implement this first September?
Well, we do.
Are we looking at a year from September?
Well, we do because we have, the guidance counselors have used this model and have placed all the students in it, and the School Brains model has been set up for this. We were, we were geared to go for this and they had started this back in November, in December, and February, once the implementation of School Brains, once School Brains, once Mary Antovaros got a hold of it, and this was the one that the high school had decided to go with, that's how they go. Me, I just had said, I have two principals sitting in front of me, I have four principals sitting in front of me, they would tell you, I really don't, they'll come and they'll say this is the schedule running because of this.
Oh, yeah, right.
You know, this is, no, so that's one.
They all know that our history with scheduling isn't the best.
No, I know.
Getting out scheduled, getting them running.
But unfortunately, unfortunately, we implemented this schedule, all the kids are pro, all the kids are ready, and we could print schedules tomorrow.
I think that's, you're just going to pull the trigger.
And, right, and I think that that's, you know, Mrs. Noyes and I were in a meeting today, the council was there, we're gonna, right, and we're going to talk again about it, and they're going to go out and take a look at, it's, schedules are hard. Whether you do a six-by-six, a four-by-four, a power block, a 82-minute with five lunches, the alternate schedule, the five-by-seven, the six-by, was it the six-by-two, you get two on it. You can have any arrangement, some people are going to like it and some people are not going to like it. We don't have vocational where kids come to school for three hours and then get on a bus and go up to VOC. That's traditional scheduling. That's where you have that because you've got to have VOC kids going to math and English, and then they get in the bus and they head up to VOC. New York State does that. They still have the VOCs, they still go, and most of the schools in New York State are on that type of schedule. One through seven, so that English and math, you've got to have, you have to have that. And most, in most schools, it's phys ed and health. You've got to have some type of, you've got to have that. You've got to have some type of, you've got to have that, that's mandatory. Here, we have kids that go vocational, nine through 12. We're trying to implement a little bit of both worlds, we're trying to get co-op in here.
I was going to say, that's one of the biggest benefits to this schedule, is the internship program.
And that's what we're trying.
We're looking towards three years from now, career pathways for our students that they can truly go out into the community, take 72 minutes or 80 minutes, and actually, you know, get some work done so that when you're a senior, you're really going out and helping our communities and finding, you know, whether you like to be a nurse or not, or whether you want to be an elementary school teacher, or, you know, a mechanic, whatever the case may be. But this definitely allows for increased amount of community service as well as the internships for the future.
I can honestly tell you with this, you know, feeding kids from my school into the middle, West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School, so, you know, we share some specialists between the two schools. And I spent a considerable amount of time this winter grumbling about how this works versus how my school works and that they don't mesh. And my, the teachers that I share, they don't, they're not very shy about grumbling about things they don't like, and they universally love this schedule to the point where I'm actually looking at bringing this schedule to my sixth grade for next year just because it works so well for the kids. So I love this idea, I think it's great for our kids here.
I think it's just fear of the unknown and, and said running through it.
And change is hard. But I think once the teachers go see it and talk about it, we might be able to, and then parents can go. So, I mean, parents could certainly call and if they wanted to go and take a look at it. I would certainly ask, Tim, you have some knowledge in it, maybe we get Mark over here, if we can get him over here, and he's the principal of the junior, senior high school and he could talk.
Buy him a drink.
Talk to this, to the schedule. Or have him come over for the day and maybe walk here. And I did talk to Dr. Oakley about that as well, to bring him, I don't think she'd have a problem either way. We did this with, and Mr. Gent, the Mitchell School last year, we had several conversations about how that schedule was running because he had to pay, you know, he was borrowing from Paul to pay Peter many times to be able to have his data meetings and to be able to have his one-on-ones and to be able to have. So when we added the steam room, he was able to have enough specials where kids weren't overloading one special, so he could spread them out. So now you, every, if you have four fourth grade classrooms or, or.
Seven.
Seven, fourth grade, we have seven specials. So now a group of kids, 30 kids go to one, or 25 go here, and 25, and 25. It's not 31, 36, 27, and he's not borrowing. That's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to get more time for teachers to have common so that they can get together and collaborate and plan. We want more time for kids to be able to dig deep, not to be so anxious, not to have that, but on the other side, you know, we heard that, you know, oh, I'm going to have eight classes. That's not what this means, and I think that that's, when people are looking at it, is, you know, we have some kids taking five APs. That's going to be a lot of work. It is going to be a lot of work, that's how we need to change how we design our programming. Dr. Williams, I know, is working with this, working with the principals and working with the curriculum directors from other school districts about these types of things. What does digging deep? You know, do we want to swim further across or do we want to swim deeper and really get what's going on down below and, you know, what happens here? And it's the depth of knowledge. But that changes the way we teach. You know, we compared it today to, I said, you know, if anybody wants to go over and watch Mrs. Byrne's second grade classroom, I think I used second grade, I said, you could go into a class and see centers. There's a learning center with the teacher up in front, which is great, but there's learning centers over here in the back and over here and in the corner over here, and those students, if you walk into Mrs. Byrne, into Central School at any time, the teacher's with four or five kids up in front, and the other candidates are working on independent learning and thinking and collaboration with a peer. That's how you grow, you know? So this will take some time, we're working on it, you know, we're in it and we're going to keep moving.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good night.
Thanks for your time, guys.
Next up, we have Mr. John Shea. He's our school business administrator, and he is going to speak to us about many things. I'll let you take it over, Mr. Shea.
Sure. Well, it took me probably two years, but I finally labeled and numbered my presentation, so hopefully.
I know, he's in pen.
Be easier to follow. In your package, there's a page labeled A. Page one.
And attention, this is for you.
I got it, I got it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Look at that. You there, Gordon?
A1.
A, that's A.
I got A right here.
Don't go far, Gordon.
This is the operating budget. Oh, I can find C. Operating budget status summary report that I provide every time I meet. This is the comparison at this point of time this year to where we were last year in the budget, actual and expense balances. You can see on the top of the page, this is the summary at April 17, 2019, non-salary. We right now have an available balance of $199,247. At this point of last year, we had an available balance of $163,000. So we are trending very similar to where we were last year. Salary-wise, we have a balance of $5,966,000, and compared to last year, we have an available balance of $5,751,000. So top, high level, this report is provided to hopefully give you guys a comfort that last year was, we ended the year very well, and this year we are trending in the same manner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Report B.
Excellent, John.
What's that look like? Report B is what we call the principals' report. This is the, a little more detail to report A. This is my source of report A. These are all the budgeted line items, by account, by school, with the budget, any amendments that were made to the budget. And I'm reading across the top, the columns. The encumbrances, encumbrances for the new members, if you're not aware, those are bills that are, have been approved in our PO system and are ready to pay, but just haven't been paid yet. Expenditures, which are actual expenses, and to the right, unencumbered balance. So each line item has a budget amount and a expense amount, and what is left in the budget for that line item. Now, if you notice going down the list, there are some negatives there. Those would be line items that have, we've overspent that particular budget. So I'll bring you to attachment C. And this is something we've done this year once, and this was a recommendation of the ORC report, is that as line items are overspent, adjustments should be made and should be approved by the school committee. This is just an Excel file of the previous report with an additional column, couple columns. In the middle of the page, you'll see column D. Those are the proposed adjustments to the line items in order to remove the negative In total, of course, that effect is zero, but in order to make sure we stay on track for each line item, I am proposing these adjustments. I have sent these adjustments out to each of the principals, so it's not just me creating these. They have reviewed them and are okay with them. But I would ask that.
A vote.
We have a vote.
John, what's driving our legal expenses so much?
Negotiations.
Is it just negotiations? Because I would have thought we would have included that in our budget.
That's a lot of it. Arbitration.
Yeah, okay, that was, was it? It is related to the arbitration.
Homeless transportation, I mean, I know you can't really exactly hit the nail on the head with that, but that's a lot off from what we budgeted.
Yeah.
Well, because didn't we reduce that at one point, John, and now we're going the other way?
Homeless.
No, that sped, sorry, I'm reading the.
No, actually, we did, we did, we did reduce homeless transportation, but we've seen a large increase in the last couple of months.
Right, you have kids like may come in, come into the district.
Yes.
That were unanticipated.
So is 30 grand roughly what we budgeted in previous years, or is that?
No, actually, no, because McKinney-Vento bill, previously, we really didn't have to pay for homeless transportation. That's one of these unfunded mandates.
Stop taking my lyrics, John.
So last year was definitely lower than what it is this year. And actually, Desi just came out with a survey that our special ed department just completed. So the state is actually looking to maybe start reimbursing schools for that, for homeless transportation.
I just read something about that.
Or reimbursement.
I'll take half at this point.
No.
I would.
John, can you do this? Homeless transportation, does that mean we're transporting kids to EB?
Yes.
Or we're, okay, it's not the other way around, okay? Regardless of where they are at that point, they were students here, they're not in their home here, so we have to get them to bring.
Yep.
I make a motion at this time to accept these recommended amendments as written.
Go move.
Moved by Teresa, second by Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for doing this, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Attachment D is the summary of the revolving fund balances, which I provide every report that I do with, again, a comparison to where we were last year at this time.
John, I know you can't, I wouldn't expect you to be able to answer this off the top of your head, but maybe for the next meeting that we have. I'm just curious, what percentage of our athletic budget is covered by fees versus budget? And I'm sure you, I would not expect you to know that off the top of your head.
What percentage of our athletic budget?
You know, like how much are we funding with the fees and how much are we funding with appropriation, for lack of a better term?
Yep.
Because what's it be, 350?
350.
Do you have any more circuit breaker money coming in? Or are we done for the?
Oh, no, we have more circuit breaker money. We.
Have we spent down what we need to?
I have spent down some circuit breaker money.
But we have more to.
I have another $350,000 that I need to spend down, which we will use to prepay tuitions, but we really don't start cranking those out until end of May, June.
And Little Vikings, the book's out.
Book is out.
The book is out.
She's going to be coming to a meeting in May.
Attachment E, I misspoke at the last meeting. I said school choice tuition was quarterly. Circuit breakers quarterly, school choice tuition is monthly. So I just wanted to show you that.
I actually like this breakdown of all the, not really relative to school choice, I just think it's an interesting.
Yeah, this website, the Division of Local Services, the amount of information on this website just grows and grows and just makes my life a lot easier. So I just wanted to acknowledge that I was wrong last meeting.
Thank you.
Go, John.
Appendix, attachment F, there's been a lot of talk about school choice, what it is, what it can be used for. I think this is a very good advisory.
This was a really good on, because I was having this discussion with Hazel a couple times with gross versus net in terms of, and I thought this was really good, thank you for including that.
So that's for your review.
When did they establish the $5,000 cap on school choice?
Oh, it had to be.
It's been 20.
Certainly, people's expenditures were in the five-digit numbers.
I'm just so amazed that with all the talk about the chapter 70 formula being revised, that they didn't talk about school choice reimbursement rates changing either. It's been forever since.
Well, that probably won't because, not right off the bat, because if you're trying to regain that money that you lost. So if you, if you go up with school choice, it will never come back out, so.
Makes sense.
You'll still be at a loss.
Some districts will be.
Yeah.
That's what I have tonight, but I do have some general updates I wanted to bring you guys up to speed about, if you don't have any questions about the numbers or the presentation.
Thank you.
Central School Boiler Project, the bids were open today. There were five bids received. Our project manager is the one that handles all this. All bids were under budget, which is, which is great news. The bids range from $760,000 to $1 million, and what was budgeted is 1.2 million. So that is excellent. The OPM will be reviewing all the bids and then it will come to us to vote.
And what's our reimbursement on that, 56 something?
56.26. One thing, quick, I wanted to show you on the website that we just went live with today, and we're the first in the state to do it.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you, John. Thank you, Liz.
On our website, on the CLIDO, we now have.
I need to do this.
We now have a link for projects.
Does that say projects?
Projects.
Yeah. It's not obvious to see it.
Our Central School Boiler Project is.
Ah.
Oh, cool.
Oh, nice.
So it gives a brief description, it'll, we'll be able to update the pictures as the project goes along.
Wow.
And then if the roof gets approved, would you just like add that?
It shows what the projected funds were, and I update this, he will update this in a month or a week, and it shows.
Oh, wow.
That's really nice. John, go down for a second, because I'm just curious. Keep going, keep going, keep going. See that, submit a question or comment. Who does that even go to?
Us.
Oh, it does go to us?
To John and I.
Because that's CLID, because it's CLID running it, so I wasn't sure.
No, CLID, they run it through us and we, we talked to the, John and I are on an email with our team, our manager, and she's been great. She's been great. We said, you know, we send her pictures and John sends her up the financial statement of this, and we'll give her the timeline for the OPM, and as that comes out.
Oh, that's great.
And we update it on a daily, so we hope people are looking at it. I did get one question, and I sent it back a while back.
We've only had one question.
Yeah, we've only had one question.
That's the first time I even noticed that that option was there.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Liz.
So Towns.
Yeah, who are we supposed to thank for this now?
Oh, my God.
Towns used that project page on their CLIDO website, but I think we're the first school to do it.
Nice.
Well done.
Thanks, Liz.
Thanks, John.
Good job.
Maybe the town will get a CLIDO now.
It might.
It might.
It might. Time and attendance system, which we've talked about, the implementation is going great. We plan on starting with one department, our cafeteria staff, by the end of May. So, we figured it's, it's a large undertaking and a lot of training involved, so if we get one department up to speed and make sure that works smoothly, we'll be good to go with the other.
Refresh my memory, what do we use it now? I know it's on Abacus, but...
Paper.
That's what I thought, okay. That's what I thought. I know it wasn't an Abacus, but I knew it was...
It'll take, it'll reduce the time.
It will reduce the amount of time involved in tracking...
The accuracy, too, I have to imagine.
Accuracy, reporting-wise, that'll make life a lot easier.
Plus, can't the people, like, look at their own stuff at that point?
Yes.
We won't be doubling efforts.
Whatever they have.
Well, that's if, right, we won't be doubling efforts, but we'll also be able to, that's with the software. If the town goes with software, we won't be doubling efforts. This is...
All right, can I ask a question, since you just said software? What does the town use right now?
Software.
Software, but they don't use the whole...
We don't...
They're not using it for payables?
No, no, they don't use the PO system.
The, like, the DPW and so forth do not, they submit their bills to the accountant's office to put onto a warrant. They're not entered as purchase orders? And that's why...
So, it was a purchase order that prevented the...
If it had been entered as a purchase order...
As a purchase order. So, they're not using purchase orders and we are?
Yes.
Gotcha. That's what I was trying to figure out where we were disconnecting.
But the town's currently looking at...
Yes.
Potentially moving to software, right?
Yes.
I look forward to that.
I think we all do.
Talking about integration, one of the things we're actually working with the town on is taking a look at all our copy of leases and agreements. We did it ourselves a couple of years ago, but we're partnering with the town, and we're going to look at it all together and hopefully see if we can get a better deal for both of us.
Nice job. That's what we should be doing.
Thanks, John.
Good work, John.
Thanks, John.
And we'll find out about the grant tomorrow. There's only 138 awards, there's 1,000 schools, so...
Is this the safety one?
Yeah.
What's the criteria for sliding through?
Getting out of your office and going to meetings? Thanks, Liz.
There's, there's, there's certain points to your grant. What are you using it for, whether it's, the grant is complete? You receive the most points if you are using it for door locks and things like that, which we are.
Which we are.
So, hopeful. And we're also, tomorrow, we're meeting with the police department to work with them to file another grant. So, there's a federal grant out there for security, so we'll be working with them.
Chief Allen has been...
Phenomenal.
A great colleague, a great, you know, another guy...
Ally.
Ally that we work with nonstop over here, just has been tremendous of trying to help and get these things for the schools.
You know, it benefits both departments. It's less worry on him if we're, we're, wants to build buildings.
Oh, right.
And obviously, we keep our kids safe. I mean, it's...
But just the information, the information that he provides to us without, just is seamless.
That's great.
Yeah.
Speaking of police, just for the public's benefit, the Drug Takeback Day is Saturday, along with shredding and paint, did I read?
I didn't see it. Oh, great. Where is that?
That's at the...
You're going there.
We have Mary Poppins.
I don't have any drugs, but I got paint.
Is that this weekend?
Mary Poppins is tomorrow night at 7:00, 1:00 on Saturday, I believe, and 7:00 Saturday night and 1:00 PM on Sunday.
At the Mitchell School.
At the Mitchell School.
What else you got, John? Give us that.
It's going to be a great play.
It looks good.
Thank you for all your hard work, John and Superintendent.
Team effort.
I wanted to, I thanked you both.
I didn't mean Liz, I meant Joanne and others in the department.
Oh, watch out. No lunch for you tomorrow. At this time, I would take a motion to, so we're revoting on the March 28, 2019 minutes because it wasn't an official vote last time, because we have to have a quorum. I did double-check with our field director at the, a field rep at the MASC, and we do have to have a quorum voting on that. It wasn't, two people wasn't enough. And I was told that anyone can vote on the meeting as long as they watched the meeting, and Tim was here in the audience, and Rob watched it on TV, so what?
Like that?
So, we can vote on it. So, I would take a motion to vote on the March 28, 2019 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Teresa, second by Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Obstand.
I mean, you didn't watch us on TV going, kind of very busy.
Been traveling. I couldn't get the station.
And at this time, I would take a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from April 11, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Gordon, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And at this time, I would take a motion to approve Council Payable Warrant 44V dated April 24, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Gordon, all in favor?
Aye.
And I would take a motion to approve payroll, payroll warrant 43PS dated April 17, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa. Second by Rob, all in favor?
Aye.
And, let's go to the next one, we'll skip to the end. Actions requiring, I take a motion to accept the generous donation of $97.50 from Amica, I thought the Amica Companies Foundation to Mrs. McGovern's classroom for supplies. That's very nice of them.
So moved.
Moved by Gordon, second by Teresa. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's neat. I didn't know that you could...
I think that's how you say it.
Do a matching, like, an employer match to, like, just a school. I thought it had to be, you know, cancer, you know, one of the biggies. That's kind of nice.
Yeah, that's nice. And now we have, I would take a motion to, after discussion, we have to discuss this, so I would take a motion to approve, but we need to discuss, so maybe I won't take a motion to approve it. So, we'll just open up discussion. Motion to discuss moving our school committee meetings from the second and fourth Thursday to every second and fourth Tuesday for the FY 2020 school year. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa, second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. How does everybody feel about it?
Why?
Because it seems like there's a lot of things that happen on Thursdays, and so it was just brought up as a suggestion. Actually, this has been discussed for the last, I don't know how many months, when we started talking about it, back in maybe January or February or something, I don't even know, it's been so long. So, we just brought it back again to see what everybody wanted to do.
It seems as though townwide Thursday night is probably the busiest night of the week.
We said about it, the band concerts, the open houses, the...
Baseball, basketball.
Yeah, I mean, those are all week.
I'm just thinking selfishly, I'm a scout leader, and we have our meetings Tuesday night, but this might be my reason to not do scouts next year, so this could be my...
Right, if I don't, it's going to be a patrol, that's...
I don't want to, I just, we just, we talked about it, and I said, is there...
And Tuesdays are less conflicted townwide?
I think, what happens at the end of the week, it's that's when, like, when we see the plays and the, and the, the music is mostly on the Thursday nights. And when we do open houses or parent-teacher conferences are usually later in the week.
Always Thursdays.
So, it's just, you know, we can't get to those, or we, you know...
Okay.
That was just one of the...
With advance, knowing in advance, it's not a problem for me. My concern was, I think Teresa had conflicts when we talked about it before.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not ideal for me, but if the will allow it, I'll figure out a way to make it work.
And then the other issue, so the other issue is the two...
Is it every Tuesday, scouts?
Three of the four Tuesdays.
Cap is, cap is every Tuesday.
I can live without it.
But no, I mean, I can make it work, I just got to get a guardianship thing done.
Well, my concern, too, is for the new members who ran knowing the meeting on Thursdays, is that okay? So, anything?
That's why we waited to take a vote on that.
I think the scouts will carry on.
No longer the Boy Scouts, right? Now, it's just the Scouts?
Scouts.
Okay.
What about one Tuesday night and one Thursday night?
Oh, oscillation. There you go.
Diversity.
Diversity. That's the word I was looking for.
I'll, I'll make whatever work.
Oh, but we were just talking about, I just said, what's the difference if we did one Tuesday and one Thursday?
But if we, it's getting the right ones, you know?
Can we do a set where it would be like, the first meeting of the month would be Tuesday, and the second meeting would be Thursday, like, every...
Sure. That makes sense.
...we could plan, or would it, I mean, if we were to do it...
Yeah, you could. But okay. I'll go, I'll do what I want to do.
Honestly, I...
Frankly, I'd rather just do Tuesdays if we want to switch it, but I mean, if someone...
No, I'll, I'll make it work.
All right.
Okay. So, Liz, so you want to...
What?
I would think about doing a Tuesday, Thursday, no? Or Tuesday, Wednesday?
I can make it work with it, I just got to do a guardianship. I mean, my biggest issue is I'm the only one.
The only thing, like, for the August meeting...
Somebody appointed.
Is Wednesday, is Wednesday out of the question? Nobody likes to meet Wednesdays. I don't know.
I don't have anything against Wednesdays being as diverse as I am, like, every day of the week.
I think the purpose would be to go to...
Taddy's Monday.
Monday.
She's Monday night.
Yes.
I know.
I would just keep, I would ask to keep the Thursday, August meeting the same, because I wouldn't want to do the Tuesday. We don't need to, we don't need to start to end the summer any earlier and do the first meeting in August, because the August meeting is on a Thursday, but it's like towards the end of the week.
Yep.
Right, did we even, did we even ask EB Camp if Tuesday worked for you guys?
Tuesday's fine with us.
Why it's not Wednesday?
We have a particular show.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's good, that's good to know.
Take a motion to change our school committee meetings with the exception of the August 1st meeting. I'll leave that on a Thursday, with the exception of the August meeting.
Or just move it to the following Tuesday? Or is that after school?
That's like the very beginning of school.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
I don't know.
Do you need us to meet before the school year begins?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I would leave that...
We're going to need that August meeting.
Oh, no, I know, that's why I'm saying, I don't know.
I don't have a calendar, so I can't look.
Why don't you ta, can I make a suggestion?
Sure, go ahead.
Could you table this?
Sure. We've tabled it 50...
Because then I, we can go through the schedule, we have the calendar.
Oh, for next year, you mean?
And go through it, and let's see what Tuesdays look like on the calendar, and then see what Thursdays look like, because we've got the two weeks now, we've got a full two at Christmas. That throws everybody back and throws it forward.
We have two weeks off for Christmas, maybe?
Yeah. But that's going to throw it, so it throws...
Yeah, well, not just that, like, we end up missing a meeting in November because of Thanksgiving and then...
Right, so, but we, but if we look at, if, I can get the draft out, we can even,